All right, well, let's start with a word of prayer and we will pick up where we left off at verse 10. Lord God, we thank you for your word. We thank you for the faithful recording. And here 2,000 years later, we can open this book and read of the vision that you gave your servant John. And we pray, Father, that your Holy Spirit will guide and direct us in this study. Give us eyes to see, ears to hear, and a heart to full of desire to obey you, to live out your word, and to represent you to this world, to share the good news of Jesus Christ, that we would be transformed and that we would live that out and share it with everyone we know, that the words here that we read will not scare us, but ultimately, we put even more faith and confidence in you as our sovereign Lord over the entire earth, that we would never be scared of what man can do to us, but that we would live boldly, sharing the good news with everyone. I thank you again that your word can speak as it has over the last 2,000 years, that it speaks today and can speak in this moment. We do this, we gather to study your word. We do this for your glory and worship to you. May your blessing be on this time. And pray this in Jesus's name, amen. All right, so here we are in chapter six and seven seals have been begun being opened or broken and we have made our way to verse 10, but I want to back up just a touch to verse nine. And we kind of left off at a pretty interesting point there. So let me read nine through 11, verses nine through 11 of chapter six. "When the Lamb broke the fifth seal, I saw underneath the altar the souls of those who had been slain because of the word of God and because of the testimony which they had maintained. And they cried out with a loud voice, saying, 'How long, O Lord, holy and true, will you refrain from judging and avenging our blood on those who dwell on the earth? And there was given to each of them a white robe; and they were told that they should rest for a little while longer until the number of their fellow servants and their brethren, who were to be killed even as they had been, would be completed also." Okay, some verses to start on, right? So last time, as we were discussing what is commonly called the four horsemen, leading into more specifically, the martyrs, right? Most, the cry of the martyrs, as maybe some of your Bibles have as a subheading. And I think one of the interesting notes, I think, came from Keener's commentary on the New Testament, just drawing a comparison with these martyrs underneath the altar with the sacrifice of the bullock and the blood being poured out underneath the altar at the tabernacle and later at the temple. And so just kind of drawing a comparison there. Now, as we move forward into verse 10, "They called out in a loud voice, 'How long, sovereign Lord, holy and true, until you judge the inhabitants of the earth and avenge our blood? So from beneath the altar there rises a plea for vindication. With a loud voice the martyrs cry out, 'How long, sovereign Lord, holy and true, until you judge the inhabitants of the earth and avenge our blood? Some writers emphasize what appears to be a marked contrast between this prayer and that of Stephen, the first martyr, whose last words were a request that those who were stoning him not be held responsible for their act." And that's in Acts, chapter seven, verse 60. "Had not Jesus himself prayed at Calvary, 'Father, forgive them, for they do not know what they are doing,'" Luke, chapter 23, verse 34. But before we conclude that the cry of the martyrs for vindication is sub-christ, certain other considerations should be taken into account. The idea of divine vindication of the people of God is common throughout the Old Testament. So once again, think of the whole Bible. Psalm 79, verse 10 reads, "Why should the nation say, 'Where is their God? Before our eyes make known among the nations that you avenge the outpour'd blood of your servants.'" Psalm 79, verse 10. It's actually in a discussion with somebody the other day about just the songs we sing in church. And somebody was like, "Why don't we just stick to the songs that are in our Bible?" Exhibit A. Imagine singing that on Sunday morning. So anyways, moving on. "This request does not rise from a personal desire for revenge, but out of concern for the reputation of God. It is unlike the attitude of the Jewish writer of the assumption of Moses, which is apocryphal, who promised the saints that they," or I'm sorry, pseudographic, pseudographical, "who promised the saints that they would look down from on high and rejoice that their enemies were in Gehenna." Gehenna is the Hebrew word for hell. It is certain, it certainly has, it certainly has none of the vindictiveness or Tertullian, the early third century apologist, who writes of how he will laugh and exalt at the last judgment as he sees the proud monarchs groaning in the lowest abyss of darkness and the magistrates liquefying in fiercer flames than they have ever kindled against the Christians. Tertullian. You don't usually hear that quote, do you? So one interesting suggestion is that the martyrs' cry should be interpreted against the background of Hebrew jurisprudence in which a plaintiff must plead his own case. Condemned in a human court, the decision stands unless reversed by a higher court. The real point of issue is not the relation of the martyrs to their accusers, but the validity of their faith. "So God is appealed to as one who is holy and true, totally separate from all evil. He will vindicate with integrity those who have given their lives for the cause of righteousness." Through centuries of oppression, the cry, "How long", has consistently risen to heaven. "How long will the wicked, O Lord, how long will the wicked be jubilant?" Asked the psalmist, Psalm 94, verse three. "How long, O Lord, must I call for help? Asked the prophet, but you do not listen." Habakkuk, chapter one, verse two. Vindication, not bitter revenge, is the theme. Here, the inhabitants of the earth is a semi-technical designation for the human race in its hostility to God. In chapter 11, verse 10, they are those who rejoice over the death of the two witnesses. In chapter 13, they are pictured as worshiping the beast, verses eight and verse 12. "And in chapter 17, as intoxicated with the wine of the great prostitutes' adulteries." So that's chapter 17, verse two. "Their names are not written in the book of life," chapter 17, verse eight, "and they are subject to the coming hour of trial." Chapter three, verse 10, and chapter eight, verse 13. So altogether, you have these individuals who have been martyred, but they stayed faithful to the testimony, right? They have, even in the face of not just persecution, but, I mean, and let's be real here, not just persecution like, oh, I wasn't included in X, Y, or Z, or I got made fun of on social media. This is state-sponsored. This could be of the masses. That level of persecution where you are not just being excluded economically, but maybe imprisoned, where there maybe is even a systematic approach to persecuting Christians. And not just for a day, but over a long period of time. Possibly even more horrific things of torture and trying to get somebody to recant, right? They stayed faithful. So underneath the altar, the souls of those who had been slain because of the word of God and because of the testimony which they had maintained. They maintained the testimony, right? The word of God. And so these individuals stayed faithful. They held to it, even in the face of death, right? We know they died. They were killed. They were murdered for believing in God and holding to the testimony. They stayed faithful. They gave up their lives. So that's intense. We just can't just kind of skirt right over that and, oop, moving on. And even wonder why, oh, boy, they're asking for vengeance? They're asking for God's judgment to be poured out? That's so harsh. Well, it's justice. That judgment is coming to the earth, right? And this is a reminder for each and every one of us that, you know, most of our lives, we have dwelt in relative security. Right? I mean, there's plenty of other countries that have not experienced the level of security that we have had, especially in Columbus, Indiana, right? And that's a challenge for us to, when we read this, to understand how fragile that security really is, and especially for us as followers of Jesus Christ. And that we're in enemy territory. As long as we are in the world, clock's ticking. We are one day closer to Jesus's return. Praise the Lord, right? There's a whole lot of other things that go along with that, and that's what we're reading. And that's, we need to prepare ourselves. We need to prepare the next generation, the generations to come after us, right? To know the word of God and to have that level of grit to hold to it no matter what. But that's the challenge of it all. Absolutely. And I don't know if maybe persecution would bring the best of us out, like, bring the best out of us. Like, oh, this is serious, you know? Maybe, you know, playing a sport, a contact sport, and, you know, it's only after the first hit that you kind of wake up and you're like, oh, yeah, there's a game going on. Let's do this, you know? And maybe that's it. Maybe that's what we need to see to see the church like rise up and be like, oh, you know what? This, I do need to share the gospel with the people I work with. And, you know, I'm already getting all this hate over here. It's not gonna matter. Might as well share it with my coworkers, share it with everybody. They need to know that I am following Jesus. What's it gonna take for us to do that in a time of peace, let alone in a time of persecution? Can't wait till then. We need to do this today. And ultimately, what we're reading here is really leading into the rest of what we're gonna read in the book, that judgment will come. So imagine, like, John's not writing this for martyrs. He's writing this for those who are experiencing persecution, who could potentially become martyrs. So you have a whole bunch of people reading this 2,000 years ago, who are starting to experience persecution in some of those cities, and they could face their persecutors, knowing that they are on the verge of giving up their lives, but to know that vindication will come, that judgment will come upon the earth. I don't know if that makes it any better, but to know that God is sovereign and God will wrap everything up in the end. I mean, imagine, imagine that, living with persecution and just knowing that, like, well, are they gonna get away with this forever? Oh, no, they're not. They're not. There is this beautiful vision that the Lord gave John, and he clarified that for each and every one of us, that there is going to come an end point when after that point, there will not be any more persecution. There will not be any more martyrs, because God is gonna wrap all of this up. If you were about to experience, you know, if the persecution was intensifying, well, you know what? Okay, all right. We just need to stay faithful. We need to pass this word along. We need to teach others, you know, hey, start memorizing the word of God, because you might not have a Bible. They might all be confiscated. How much do you know, right? So training the next generation, I mean, that's the stuff that they're anticipating. That's the stuff that John's warning about. So, verse 11. "Once again, so then each of them was given a white robe, and they were told to wait a little longer until the number of their fellow servants and brothers, who were to be killed as they had been, was completed." Mounts writes, "To each of the martyrs was given a white robe." Some writers understand this as a reference to spiritual or glorified bodies that are given to the martyrs ahead of time as a token of special honor. "It is thought to have developed from God's wrapping himself in light as with a garment," Psalm 104, verse two. Apocalyptosis, we'll leave that one, "spoke of the resurrection bodies of the righteous as garments of glory." First Enoch, chapter 62, verse 16, and second Enoch, chapter 22, verse eight. Once again, if you're wondering, why is Luke bringing Enoch into this? Why is Mounts even quoting from it? Because these were common at that time that John was writing, right? In the same way that I could bring up the Left Behind series, and everybody's like, oh, yep, I know what you're talking about. Same thing here.
What was that verse?
Right? So in the same way that, you know, you have this writing, these writings that were contemporary with John, that his authors would have known and they would have caught some of these languages or phrases or something like that. You know, so this is something that some of that imagery could have hearkened back. So first Enoch, chapter 62, verse 16, and second Enoch, chapter 22, verse eight. And these are just a Google search away, right? Might mess up your algorithm, but, you know, that makes it interesting. "Which were stored up on high in the seventh heaven," and this is the ascension of Isaiah, chapter four, verse 16. You're like, I've never even heard of that, right? So Paul's reference to a building from God, an eternal house in heaven, not built by human hands, which will clothe the believer at death, 2 Corinthians, chapter five, verse one, is thought to be analogous here. Also, 1 Corinthians 15, verse 35, and following. So in the book of Revelation, however, so here's a departure from some of those other scholars. "White robes are symbols of blessedness and purity." Blessedness and purity. "The redeemed throng before the throne," in chapter seven, verse nine, "are arrayed in white robes." So kind of, this is where we're letting scripture interpret scripture, right? Or in, within the same vision, where else do we see white robes? Chapter seven, verse nine, "The redeemed throng before the throne are arrayed in white robes. They have come out of the great tribulation and washed their robes and made them white in the blood of the Lamb." So chapter seven, verses 13 through 14, and also chapter 22, verse 14. "The church, Alia Dicia, is counseled to buy gold, white clothes, and eye-salve." Chapter three, verse 18, "A strange suggestion if white robes are glorified bodies." Just, just putting that out there. "The martyrs are told to wait a little longer until their number is completed. The victims of Nero's persecution are about to be joined by those who will give their lives rather than pay homage to Domitian as divine. The charge is not to control their impatience, but to rest in the enjoyment of their blessedness. There are others who are yet to join their number. So Jewish thought portrayed God as governing the world according to a predetermined time schedule." So you can see that in, let's see, 2 Estros, chapter four, verses 35 through 37, "In which the end would not come until the full number of the righteous were offered." Also, first Enoch, chapter 47, verse four. "Those to be killed are their fellow servants, even their brothers and sisters." The verses, this verse, the verse does not distinguish two separate groups. Any questions on nine, 10, and 11? I'll repeat, I'm thinking, I'm thinking. So because of the nature of their, you know, their position, where they're at, the white robes, and basically, what's not said is basically their sins are forgiven, but yet you have their persecutors. They're calling for judgment on. So is this implying that those persecutors are not within the church or not Christians? They are outside of the church. They are of the world, of the enemy, right? And yes, I think that is absolutely accurate. Now, could some of the enemy be in the church, church building, church organization, however you want to say that? Of course, of course, right? But would they actually be of the church? The people of God? And I think that's a no. Oh, boy.
To reiterate, it's an implication, not an actual prophecy.
Right, yeah, it's, it's, yeah. So that is absolutely implied. That's not, you know, speaking more to that within the church, right? This is more of the world versus the church. Yes. Oh, a couple more. There you go. All right, so just reading here, we're ready for the sixth seal. And this is, it's gonna, it's gonna escalate, right? Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. Hmm, is there a connection between that number mentioned in verse 11, the full number of their brethren, with the fullness of the Gentiles? I think that is a fair connection, because, so not everybody that's coming in, right, even with the fullness of the Gentiles, are going to be martyred though, right? But they gotta come in before they are martyred for, you know, holding to the testimony and to the word of God. So I think that is where the limitation on the connection. Does that make sense? And so you gotta be a part of the group to like, to get in, to be martyred and be like, oh, all right, now we're waiting on the full number of those. If you're still on the outside, if you're not even knowing the testimony, not even knowing the word of God, doesn't really count. So, yeah, so I think that's where, you know, but to even think, so with the fullness of the Gentiles coming in, yeah, that's gonna get really interesting as we get into chapter seven, when we start talking about the 144,000. So, but as we'll see, that's gonna be a little bit of a different piece, right? So, yeah, good question. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Yeah, no, and that's where, so the question is, as we're seeing seals broken, trumpets blown, bowls poured out, you know, the thunders, so are we actually gonna physically be able to see that? I don't think so. I don't think so just because, I mean, this is, as this is happening, you know, in heaven, right there in the throne room, you would actually have to have like a front row seat to witness that. Now, if over the last 2,000 years, there's a great throng of people there already, well, and maybe, and maybe if you're there long before, because whatever's happening in heaven, yeah, we are definitely gonna see the effects of it here, right? But I don't think it's gonna show on a big, you know, plasma screen in the sky of like, you know, hey, here's what's happening at this moment in heaven. Everybody buckle up, you know, get ready. And so I don't think it's gonna, you know, I don't think we'll know, but then again, I think we're gonna know when it happens. So we just won't be able to see it. So, and just here's my caveat. This is a vision from John. Is it actually gonna play out like this, or is this the medium in which he is telling how these things are gonna happen? So is God, Yahweh, on his throne, giving Jesus a physical scroll? It's a vision. Not everything in visions like are real and actual. But there is a deeper and more important point to what is in the vision, right? And it's usually explained in a certain way as, ah, this is what that means. So, so just a little caveat there. Don't want to be too dogmatic and don't want to be too like, this is how it has to be. Yes?
By real and actual, do you mean materialistic?
Yes, real and actual is immaterialistic. I'm sorry, yes, yes, absolutely, right? And especially as we're talking about, I mean, different dimensions or, you know, on earth, in heaven, what's under the earth, all of these different phrases, what do these things look like? How is it really playing out? Does it have to play out like a movie, like what we're reading in Revelation? Or, I mean, as we've seen some of the differences, even with Zechariah, or we're gonna read from Joel later, you know, different things like that, how is that going to transfer, you know, into like, when we put it all together? And even if we did, we took the time and made, took all the minor prophets, major prophets, everything that has been prophesied, all the visions that have been seen, and write those out, write a bestselling, you know, series on it, and is it gonna play out like that? It doesn't have to. It doesn't have to, because a lot of that imagery could be representative of something else, or there could be a deeper spiritual point to it. And that's okay. Right? And so this is, definitely should give us pause, look at like a lot of the visions that have taken place throughout scripture, especially when they're identified as a vision. How do, how are those translated? How did the person receiving the vision, how did they interpret that? Was there a guide there, generally an angel, helping to interpret that vision? And what were the effects of that? And especially as we saw some of those visions manifesting, right, coming true in different ways? Was it a one-to-one? If it wasn't, then maybe there's some principles to generate out of that and be like, oh, well, there were some key elements there. Maybe in principle, right, there was a connection. Does that make sense? So, I wanna, yeah. All right, any other questions? Sorry, that might, that could have been way more of a simple answer, uh, but I guess the more I think about it, it's like, oh, you know, because a lot of times we read this, we just take everything super literal, and we don't have to. But I think a lot of times we feel like we have to because, like, that's the most religiously correct thing to do. But that negates a lot of context, a lot, uh, you know, it's not a matter of taking the Bible literally, it's taking it literately. So that's why, you know, at the beginning of this whole series, we were really zeroing in on what kind of genre are we talking about? Oh, it's, you know, equal parts prophetic and apocalyptic? But, you know, that's, there's some really important pieces to understanding what we're reading, so. All right, enough about that. Verse 12. Actually, 12 through 17. "I looked when he broke the sixth seal, and there was a great earthquake; and the sun became black as sackcloth made of hair, and the whole moon became like blood; and the stars of the sky fell to the earth as a fig tree casts its unripe figs when shaken by a great wind. The sky was split apart like a scroll when it is rolled up, and every mountain and island were moved out of their places. Then the kings of the earth, and the great men, and the commanders, and the rich, and the strong, and every slave and free man hid themselves in the caves and among the rocks of the mountains. And they said to the mountains and to the rocks, 'Fall on us and hide us from the presence of him who sits on the throne and from the wrath of the Lamb; for the great day of their wrath has come, and who is able to stand?'" Got a couple notes here, uh, from Keener. Although cosmic cataclysmic language is sometimes used for God's judgments in history, example, an already fulfilled judgment, um, cosmic exaggerations of Sinai phenomena, uh, in, reported in a few different places. The language of this passage lends itself most naturally to the view that it, like the sixth and seventh trumpets and vials, represents the end of the age as cosmic destruction generally does in Old Testament prophets and Jewish literature. So you can't really subscribe a certain time or amount of time to this, but what we're reading here in this sixth seal is the end. So that is one thought and interpretation. Uh, Mounts writes, verses 12 through 17, "Come in response to the question of the martyrs under the altar in the fifth seal. How long until you avenge our blood? The answer is not given in terms of days, months, or years, but conveys the certainty that their deaths will be vindicated. Great cosmic disturbances will come to pass, and secular society responsible for the lives of believers will come to understand that God has already set into motion that chain of events by which his wrath will be fully carried out." Okay, so zeroing in here on verses 12 through 14. "So I watched as he opened the sixth seal, there was a great earthquake; the sun turned black like sackcloth made of goat hair; the whole moon turned blood-red; and the blood moons will be on the fall feast." Just kidding. "And the stars in the sky fell to the earth as late figs dropped from a fig tree when shaken by a strong wind. The sky receded like a scroll rolling up, and every mountain and island was removed from its place. With the opening of the sixth seal, the great cosmic disturbances there are to herald the last days begin. For people who held that the well-ordered movements of heavenly bodies were a token of God's providential control, the breakdown of this order would be a grim announcement that the end of the world was at hand. The details in this dramatic description of a universe in turmoil are drawn from the common stock of current apocalypticism. They are not to be taken with complete literalness. Those who first read John's description would not have bothered to debate whether or not the details were to be taken literally. They were part of a well-established tradition that went back through contemporary apocalyptic literature to the early prophetic portrayals of the day of the Lord." Have you heard about the day of the Lord, right? So this is something definitely throughout the Old Testament, we read about. And we'll touch on that here in a little bit. "The earthquake was a regular feature of divine visitation." The earthquake was a regular feature of divine visitation. When God descended on Sinai, the whole mountain trembled violently. Exodus, chapter 19, verse 18. Exodus 19, verse 18. "Isaiah prophesies that people will hide in caves from the terror of the Lord when he rises to shake the earth." Isaiah, chapter 2, verse 19. "In a little while I will once more shake the heavens and the earth," writes Haggai, chapter 2, verse 6. "This great earthquake is to be accompanied by the sun turning black like sackcloth made of goat hair, the whole moon turning blood-red," in a passage quoted by Peter on the day of Pentecost, as partially fulfilled at that time. Acts, chapter 2. Let's, uh, let's go ahead and go to Acts, chapter 2. Something that, anytime you're doing the homework and reading, um, maybe certain places where, uh, Old Testament quotations are, like in the New Testament, pause, and, you know, after you're reading that, and read those prophecies in context, and notice where the New Testament author left off. There is a lot of prophecies that talk about the Messiah that really a lot of, uh, all, New Testament authors are, um, they record, and it's like the first part of the prophecy that really has to do with Jesus's first coming, but then where they stop, where that break is, if you keep reading, it generally has to do with this second coming. Just a fun little tidbit there. And so when you're cross-referencing, make sure you kind of read the rest of that, and it's like, oh, oh, there's the full picture, right? Because, you know, when we're talking about the wrath of the Lamb, as we're gonna get into, like, this is what we're talking about, this is the wrath of lamb, a- and this is Jesus we're, we're talking about. Same Jesus. So next time you're reading your gospels, like, have this Jesus in the back of your mind. Same one, and so then, so then you're reading the whole, I mean, everything he was dealing with, and going to the cross, and, I mean, just all of that, and you have the wrath of the lamb in the back, like this full picture of like, like what Jesus was capable of doing, and just know that he knew he was on a mission, a very specific mission, right? And so, yeah, it's just, it's pretty exciting to think about. Okay, so Acts, chapter 2, starting at verse 14. "But Peter, taking his stand with the eleven, raised his voice and declared to them..." Now, this is at Pentecost, right? Everybody read this section before? I mean, you know, the tongues of fire have descended, the Holy Spirit came upon, uh, the disciples, and they are standing up and just gonna lay out a message to all these Jewish pilgrims who have come to Jerusalem in obedience to the command given in Leviticus 23, to celebrate the feast of Pentecost, or Shavuot, and to worship the Lord. And they're seeing these crazy things happening, and they're hearing these Galilean fishermen, and a tax collector, and a number of others that are all speaking in different languages. But, you know, if you're a local, and you're like, what is he even saying? I mean, they're assuming that they're drunk, right? If you, if you remember that, like, they think that they're drunk, and, and Peter has to stand up, he's like, hey, it's only nine o'clock in the morning, guys, we're not drunk, but what you're seeing here is from the Lord. And so then he goes on. So, "But Peter, taking his stand with the eleven, raised his voice and declared to them, 'Men of Judah, Judea, and all you who live in Jerusalem, let this be known to you, and give heed to my words; for these men are not drunk, as you suppose, for it is only the third hour of the day.'" "But this is what was spoken of through the prophet Joel." So we're reading from Joel, Joel, chapter 2, and we'll go to Joel here in just a minute. "And it shall be in the last days, God says, that I will pour forth of my Spirit on all mankind; and your sons and your daughters shall prophesy; and your young men shall see visions, and your old men shall dream dreams, even on my bond slaves, both men and women. I will, in those days, pour forth of my Spirit, and they shall prophesy; and I will grant wonders in the sky above and signs on the earth below, blood and fire and vapor of smoke; the sun will be turned into darkness and the moon into blood, before the great and glorious day of the Lord shall come; and it shall be that everyone who calls on the name of the Lord will be saved." Oh. Does anybody remember that second part in Peter's sermon? It's usually the first, right, where it's like, oh, yeah, he's pouring forth of his spirit. That was great, but no, a lot of times we forget this last part of this sermon. So let's go ahead and go to Joel, chapter 2. Starting at verse 28, "It will come about after this that I will pour out my Spirit on all mankind; and your sons and daughters will prophesy, your old men will dream dreams, your young men will see visions, even on the male and female servants, I will pour out my Spirit in those days. I will display wonders in the sky and on earth, blood, fire, and columns of smoke; the sun will be turned into darkness and the moon into blood, before the great and awesome day of the Lord comes, or of Yahweh comes. And it will come about that whoever calls on the name of Yahweh will be delivered; for on Mount Zion and in Jerusalem there will be those who escape, as Yahweh has said, even among the survivors whom Yahweh calls." So. All right, so. So this is where John is drawing, or if, as he is seeing this, remember what we've said before, he's either drawing from Joel in inspiration, or he's seeing this, and it's not a matter of him copying from Joel, it's just the same message giver, the same vision giver, right? And so either way, he is definitely making it known that this is the day of the Lord, or the day of Yahweh. So the stars of heaven are pictured as falling to the earth like unripe figs in a winter gale. Isaiah spoke of the starry host falling like withered leaves from the vine. Isaiah, chapter 34, verse 4. "It is one of the signs that immediately precedes the coming of the Son of Man," Matthew 13, 25 and 26. So let's go ahead and go to Matthew, chapter 25, or Matthew 13. Hmm, Mark 13. There we go. Sorry about that. Mark 13, 25, uh, we'll start reading at 24. "But in those days, after that tribulation, the sun will be darkened, and the moon will not give its light; and the stars will be falling from heaven, and the powers that are in the heavens will be shaken. Then they will see the Son of Man coming in clouds with great power and glory; and then he will send forth the angels, and will gather together his elect from the four winds, and from the farthest end of the earth to the farthest end of heaven." And then goes in talking about a fig tree, what a coincidence. So, and if you cross-reference there, Isaiah 13, verse 10, Ezekiel 32, verse 7, Joel, chapter 2 again, verse 10, as well as verse 31, and then Joel, chapter 3, verse 15. So. "So the falling of the stars upon the earth could mean but one thing to the ancient, the end has come. The sky will recede like an unrolled papirus scroll that, should it break in the middle, would roll up quickly back on either side." Everybody have that vision in their minds? So imagine unrolling a scroll, and it breaking in the middle, and it just rolls up on both sides. If you see that in the sky, that's, that's a bad sign. What is that, like a supernova or something like that? So, "The removing of every mountain and island from its place has no parallel in apocalyptic writing." That's fun. It may have been suggested by Nahum, chapter 1, verse 5, "The hills melt away", or Jeremiah, chapter 4, verse 24, "The mountains were quaking, all the hills were swaying." "So we need not expect that these cataclysmic events will take place in a completely literal sense, although whatever they depict is sufficient to drive people in terror to the mountains, where they plead for death rather than face the wrath of the Lamb, an unlikely, unlikely consequence if they symbolize no more than social and political upheavals." So if this is all metaphorical, if this is all speaking of like, social, political stuff, well, then, you know, why are they running to the mountains and I hope to die some other way instead of facing the lamb? So elsewhere in Revelation, people are pictured as so adamant in pursuing their own goals that neither demonic plague, chapter 9, verse 20, nor scorching heat is sufficient to make them repent. Nothing short of the awesome dissolution of the world itself will strike terror to the heart of people in the last days." Uh, let's see, Keener had a couple of things here. Ah, yes, a couple contextual notes. So 12 and 13 specifically. Looking at the, um, descriptions of the sun becoming dark, the moon as blood, the stars falling from the sky. Uh, an Old Testament prophecy associated the end of the age with a powerful earthquake. So Zechariah, chapter 14, uh, verses 4 and 5. So let's go ahead and go to Zechariah, just to read that and become familiar with it. "Secretly, it's my goal to, you know, spend as much time in the minor prophets as possible, because remember, that's John's Bible. And, uh, this is what, you know, when he's seeing this, you know, he's probably thinking of Zechariah's writings. So that's a challenge for each of us to know these prophetic writings just as well, and not just like the abbreviated version in Revelation." All right, Zechariah 14, verses 4 and 5. "In that day his feet will stand on the mount of Olives, which is in front of Jerusalem on the east; and the mount of Olives will be split in its middle from east to west by a very large valley, so that half of the mountain will move toward the north and the other half toward the south. You will flee by the valley of my mountains, for the valley of the mountains will reach to Azel. Yes, you will flee just as you fled before the earthquake in the days of Isaiah, king of Judah. Then Yahweh, my God, will come, and all the holy ones with him." Then Yahweh, my God, will come, and all the holy ones with him. In that day there will be no light; the luminaries will dwindle." I could literally just keep reading for the whole chapter. So, let's see. "Because severe earthquakes had wrought devastation in first-century Asia Minor, including cities such as Laodicea, this announcement would have special impact on the readers." So, remember, the area of the seven churches, very earthquake prone. So, talking about this is going to like, immediately strike fear as they're hearing this, and just being like, I've lived through enough earthquakes, and just the description of this one, I don't think I'll be sleeping tonight, right? Darkness was also an Old Testament judgment. Exodus, chapter 10, verse 21 through 23. You know what, let's, oh, that's the plague. Isaiah 50, verse three as well. And especially the judgment of the end. And here's Joel, chapter two, verse 31, as we read. Isaiah 13, verses nine and 10. Also Isaiah, chapter 24, verse 23. Ezekiel 32, verses seven and eight. Amos, chapter five, verse 18. Also Amos, chapter eight, verse nine. The stars may symbolize angelic host. We see this elsewhere. Revelation, chapter 12, verse four. Isaiah 24, verse 21. And Daniel, chapter eight, verse 10. And Daniel 10, verse 13. But, in this context, they probably depict simply the cosmic scope of the judgment. Like Isaiah 34, verse four. "The graphic language is not meant as literal astronomy; disappearing or shaken stars were used as poetic language for great devastations such as wars." Verse 14. Drawing a connection to Isaiah 34, verse four. So, we've already mentioned that a couple of times. Let's go ahead and go to Isaiah. 34. It's always a interesting sign when you read the subtitles or the chapter headings. And it's, you know, chapter 33, the judgment of God. Chapter 34, God's wrath against the nations. Might be in the right place. Okay. So, Isaiah 34, verse four. "And all the hosts of heaven will wear away; and the sky will be rolled up like a scroll; all their hosts will also wither away, as a leaf withers from the vine, or as one withers from the fig tree." So, you see already, just some of the connection in the language that John is employing, harkening back to Isaiah. So, just picking up here, before we really get into the rest of this six seal with verses 15 through 17, I just want to read a few things, so it's already fresh in our mind as we move through. I want to start with just the theme of hiding in the rocks and crying for the mountains to conceal them from God's wrath, right? So, let's go to Hosea. Hosea, chapter 10, verse eight. And I was thinking, as I was bringing some of these up, that throughout the Old Testament, especially in the prophetic writings, there is a lot, a lot of judgment. A lot of judgment being brought on the nations, or maybe a specific nation that has attacked or destroyed parts of Israel or parts of Judah. And you read it over and over and over. And, you know, those nations are no more today, and there's some that are around. But it's interesting to think about, like, oh, oh, wait a second. Jesus was quoting from some of these. Paul was, Peter was. I mean, the New Testament writers, authors, were drawing from these references. John is drawing from some of these references of judgment, right? And so, even if you're, you know, reading through the Bible in a year, and you get to some of these sections, and, you know, oh, judgment over Samaria, judgment on Ephraim, judgment, you know, on Assyria, or Babylon, or whoever, just kind of think, be like, okay, where's that country today? What happened over the course of history? How did that empire fall? But then also, just realize that whatever nation, whatever the language, it's going to find its fulfillment in the great and terrible day of the Lord. And so, as you're reading, you might be reading something prophetic of not just that time, but of a time yet to come. So, that's just a little carrot in your Bible reading, you know, as you're reading through the year, and you're just kind of like, trudging along through the prophets, maybe. Just be like, oh no, this might happen in the future too. So, there you go. All right. So, Hosea, chapter 10, verse eight. "And also the high places of Avin, the sin of Israel will be destroyed; thorn and thistle will grow on their altars; then they will say to the mountains, 'Cover us;' and to the hills, 'Fall on us.'" So, once again, just looking at those references to hiding in, for the mountains or hills to fall on them. Isaiah, chapter two, verse 10. "Enter the rock and hide in the dust from the terror of Yahweh, and from the splendor of his majesty." I really want to read the rest of this chapter, but I won't, I won't. We need to stay focused. And so, oh, man. All right. Let's see. And verses 19 through 20. Same chapter, chapter two. "Men will go into caves and, into caves of the rocks, and into holes of the ground before the terror of Yahweh, and the splendor of his majesty, when he arises to make the earth tremble. In that day men will cast away to the moles and the bats, their idols of silver and their idols of gold, which they made for themselves to worship. In order to go into the caverns of the rocks and the clefts of the cliffs before the terror of Yahweh and the splendor of his majesty, when he arises to make the earth tremble, stop regarding man whose breath of life is in his nostrils; for why should he be esteemed?" Oh, man. So, Isaiah two is just amazing. And so, think of that direct imagery, right? For John, and what he is harkening back to, and maybe what he is even seeing, like, rolling out right before him. And so, once again, just going back, what is John seeing, and was he not seeing? Is he just seeing a seal, or seal breaking? And then all of a sudden, cut to future scene of the earth, as it's all playing out? I don't know. But here is some of the imagery that Isaiah is even writing from. And so, you have people hiding from Yahweh. And we have that identification, from Yahweh, before the terror of Yahweh, and the splendor of his majesty, right? So, everybody remember that from Worship Song? The splendor of his majesty? Is this what's going through your mind? But it should. It absolutely should. And that's a huge disconnect from us.
Well, we will now.
And we will now. That's right. Yeah. And I mean, but it absolutely should, because this is the same Yahweh, who is the creator of all things, can in the same breath destroy all things.
Just be careful, the church doesn't say.
So, that is absolutely an important piece to our theology. Because if we're missing that, it's lopsided. God would never do those things. Well, wait a second. Then what's your theology on judgment? On justice? Those are very real things that require action. And that's something that makes us super uncomfortable, but we need to become comfortable with it. So, and just as a matter of reverence for the Lord Himself. And then you can see if it alters how you live your life. So, now, Isaiah, chapter two. There you go. One other reference that I just want to throw out there, and this would probably tie in a little bit more with prophecy as pattern. But I always love, I think the first time I ever heard about this was Chuck Missler drawing from, pointing to the book of Joshua as a prophetic type. Because, so, Jesus's name in Hebrew is, you know, Yehoshua, or Yeshua, right, for short? And so, it's Joshua. Could you imagine reading Joshua throughout the New Testament? That'd be kind of interesting, wouldn't it? And so, but going back to the book of Joshua, what is Joshua about? It's the conquest of the promised land. So, it's Joshua leading the people of God into, and who's fighting the battles? Generally, God is, Yahweh is, through supernatural but natural elements. And so, you know, and there's times where it's said that, you know, the Lord was responsible for killing more of the enemy than Joshua and the people of Israel were. More people died by the hailstones, by the hailstones, instead of by sword. So, but here, in verse 16 of chapter 10 of Joshua, just one point where there was a, five kings who had banded together. They had attacked Gibeon, right? But Joshua is responding, because, you know, Joshua just so happened to make a deal with the Gibeonites without consulting the Lord first. That's a whole thing. But in verse 16, as Joshua is victorious, this is after the long day. Once again, we have natural elements reacting in a supernatural way in answer to Joshua's prayer. Verse 16, "Now these five kings had fled and hidden themselves in the cave at Machadah." It was told Joshua, saying, "The five kings have been found hidden in the cave at Machadah." Joshua said, "Roll large stones against the mouth of the cave, and assign men to, by it, to guard them." And so, later on, they bring the kings out. Judgment is carried out upon them, right? So, it's just an interesting little connection there. This is one of the last, you know, after this, there's just kind of an overview of the rest of the conquest. But this kind of reaches its own climax within the book of Joshua. So, like, this was the last big challenge for Joshua and the people of Israel in the conquest of Canaan. So, so, an interesting prophecy as pattern, looking at the type that Joshua is for the Lamb in the conquest of the earth. So, there you go. And you can remember that one the next time you read through the book of Joshua. So, which, us as a church, we're getting ready to go through Joshua, and triumph and tragedy, conquest of the promised land, but then also the removal from the promised land. So, I'm looking forward to getting that started. So, that's all I'll say about that. Because if not, it'll be the next hour. So, all right. So, verses 15 through 17. "Then the kings of the earth, and the great men, and the commanders, and the rich, and the strong, and every slave, and free man, hid themselves in the caves and among the rocks of the mountains; and they said to the mountains and to the rocks, 'Fall on us, and hide us from the presence of him who sits on the throne, and from the wrath of the Lamb; for the great day of their wrath has come, and who is able to stand.'" So, as we've already read those other verses in Hosea, Isaiah, and Joshua, you can kind of see where some of that imagery is drawn from. "For the enemies of righteousness, the day of the Lord will be a day of terror." Isaiah writes, "Every man's heart will melt; they will ride like a woman in labor." Isaiah 13, verses seven through eight. "Who can stand when he appears?" "Ask Malachi; for he will be like a refiner's fire." Malachi, chapter three, verse two. So, the last question in this chapter has a direct connection to Malachi, chapter three, verse two. John pictures the people of earth fleeing to the mountains and crying for death rather than standing before the judgment of God and the wrath of the Lamb. Enlisting the various groups that seek refuge in that great day of wrath, it is not John's intention to cover the entire range of human society, but to emphasize that those who might normally have reason to feel secure will be utterly undone. "The kings of the earth are those in positions of ultimate governmental authority; the princes are next in rank; the generals are military authorities, at whose word the Roman armies advanced into battle. In that day the proud monarchs, as well as the hardened military, will flee in terror. The security of the rich and the mighty will be shattered, and all alike will panic in wild confusion." John's graphic portrayal reflects Isaiah's description of the day of the Lord as a time when people will seek refuge in the caves of the rocks from the dread, from dread of the Lord. Isaiah, chapter two, as we read. "From the day when Adam and Eve hid themselves from the presence of God, Genesis 3, 8, the guilty conscience has made people fugitives from God; but now there is no longer a place to hide. God will confront in judgment all those who have rebelled against his sovereign authority." People's terrified appeal for the mountains and rocks to fall on them reflects Hosea, chapter 10, verse eight. "They will say to the mountains, 'Cover us;' and to the hills, 'Fall on us,'" a verse applied by Jesus to the coming destruction of Jerusalem, Luke, chapter 22, verse 30. "Better death by a crushing avalanche than face the wrath of the Lamb." Ouch. So, the wrath of God. Going to talk a little bit about that. The wrath of God is a fundamental theme in New Testament teaching. It is both a present reality, Romans, chapter one, verse 18, and an eschatological event. Remember eschatology in times, right? Revelation, chapter 19, verse 15. "It is neither personal vindictiveness nor an impersonal process of retribution that works itself out in the course of history; it is rather the response of God's holiness to persistent and impenitent wickedness." So, it's a response of God's holiness to persistent and impenitent, so unrepentant wickedness. "The wrath of the Lamb, however, is an unusual and dramatic expression; only once in the Gospels is the word for wrath used of Jesus." Mark, chapter three, verse five. Let's go to Mark three. Mark, chapter three, verse five. "After looking around at them with anger, grieved at their hardness of heart, he said to the man, 'Stretch out your hand;' and he stretched it out, and his hand was restored." Isn't that interesting? So, that's the only other, that's the only once in the Gospels is the word for wrath. So, that anger used of Jesus. "Yet if Christ as the Lamb in Revelation is primarily messianic rather than saccharic..." "Yet if Christ as the Lamb in Revelation is primarily messianic rather than sacrificial, the element of paradox is not as pronounced as it usually thought to be." So the prophet Joel described the day of the Lord as great and dreadful. Joel, chapter two. "It is a day of wrath and retribution," Zephaniah, chapter one, verses 14 through 18. Let's go to Zephaniah. Zephaniah, not to be confused with Zechariah, Zephaniah, chapter one, verses 14 through 18. "Near is the great day of Yahweh." So remember Lord, all capitals, that's Yahweh, that's the name of God. "Near is the great day of Yahweh, near and coming very quickly. Listen, the day of Yahweh. In it the warrior cries out bitterly. A day of wrath is that day, a day of trouble and distress, a day of destruction and desolation, a day of darkness and gloom, a day of clouds and thick darkness, a day of trumpet and battle cry against the fortified cities and the high corner towers. I will bring distress on men so that they will walk like the blind, because they have sinned against Yahweh, and their blood will be poured out like dust and their flesh like dung. Neither their silver nor their gold will be able to deliver them on the day of Yahweh's wrath, and all the earth will be devoured in the fire of his jealousy, for he will make a complete end, indeed a terrifying one, of all the inhabitants of the earth." So according to those attempting to escape the presence of God and the Lamb, this day of wrath has come. Their rhetorical question, who can stand? Echoes not just Malachi, but also Nahum, chapter one, verse six. "Who can withstand his indignation? Who can endure his fierce anger? The announcement of the end need not be understood as the mistaken opinion of terrified humankind. The beginning of the end has arrived," in the plagues of chapter eight, verse seven through nine, verse 21, and six, chapter 16, verses two through 21, follow upon the actual opening of the seven sealed scroll. I don't know about you, but that Zephaniah passage just kind of sticks with you, doesn't it? I will comment that like in the first part of this class, everybody's face would just bow like they are now, like, this is heavy, this is really heavy, Luke. So, and it is, but, you know, we don't talk about this, we just don't, we don't talk about it enough if we did already, but we just don't. And you're not going to hear a sermon series on it. That's not an indictment on anybody, like literally, part of the teaching team here, and so, but like, you know, it's just, I mean, could you imagine sitting through a sermon series on the wrath of the, of God? The wrath of the Lamb? Don't get me wrong, I would love to preach it, I would be the first one to volunteer, but like, I mean, it's, this is the balance of, of everything. Like what we just said before. The wrath of Yahweh. And I, I love that, like, because here's where my mind goes in the Old Testament as I'm reading through this and I see the wrath of Yahweh. Don't, don't forget that even in Jesus's name, Yeshua, Yehoshua, like that means Yahweh saves. Jesus's name means Yahweh saves. And so you actually have the name of Yahweh, like identified in the person of Jesus. Just think that's a cool connection, so anytime I'm reading in the Old Testament, I'm read Yahweh, I'm thinking of God, Yahweh on his throne, but I'm also thinking the Lamb, I'm thinking Jesus, like when I'm reading that. Knowing that Jesus has been commissioned to carry this wrath out. So, now, I would encourage you. Don't just forget this as, you know, when we leave tonight. Like hold on to this, this has to be integrated into your theology. And remember this when, when we pray. But, but no, like when we're praying, like, I mean, this is, this is a God we pray to. This is the same Yahweh that we are anticipating coming in the future and bringing judgment to the earth. This is the one that, who hears our prayers. Yeah. I mean, God is all love. Even in judgment. Oh, yes, yeah, I gotta, I gotta repeat the question. So, so how do we reconcile? Like the whole idea of really kind of what has been communicated that just God is love and just love? And not this wrathful part, this vengeance is His, the, the level of judgment that we're reading about, how do we reconcile those things? How do we even, how do we disciple somebody? In that? Absolutely, I, I, so, so comment made is that don't we think that we, it's an injustice, right? It's a disservice to not present both sides.
There is a consequence, there's an eternal consequence for unrepentant sin.
Right. Absolutely, so, yes, we, we need to, it, it has to be a part of our theology so much in that as we are talking through and presenting the character of God and who God is, this has to be a part of it. Right? But a lot of times, there's one of two things that happen, it either completely gets left out or it's just a turn or burn evangelistic message, and that's it. So you're not even hearing about God's love and the invitation that is being presented as an extension of His love. As Jesus coming the first, I mean, think about this, like Jesus first time coming could have been what we're reading about. But God didn't want it that way, He wanted to send His Son to open up the doors for redemption. Praise the Lord, right? And so, but, but I think that is, this is why it has to be a part of our theology and we have to understand, right? That, man, okay, trying to think like how to articulate this, but, so if, nobody's going to be afraid, like of a peaceful man. Unless, or nobody's going to, I'm trying to think how to say this, oh man. It's just like right there on the edge. It's like having the capacity for violence. Right? Then you will appreciate that man of peace. Right? If you just have somebody who has zero capacity for violence, that doesn't make him peaceful, that just makes him harmless. And so a lot of times when we're talking about God, we're just presenting love and not both sides. And so a lot of times we're even explaining away a lot of things of history is like, that's not God. But instead of like, oh no, read your Bible from cover to cover, God is absolutely responsible for that. I mean, come on. It starts real little with the kids and we're talking about the flood. Oh, look at the happy boat, like it's a party boat, you know, like all the animals are smiling, like all the people are smiling. You just like conveniently left out, this might be graphic, all the bodies floating around the boat. Like you really want to appreciate that rainbow in the sky that God's promising not to flood the earth again? Know what that flood brought? Death. Who brought that? God did. As judgment for the consequence, as a consequence for their sin, their rebellion against Him. God loves humanity. The ones that were not rebelling against Him. Those that rebelled made a choice. And so God was willing, He didn't have to, He never has to do any of that, right? But God wanted to, He loves them, He loved Noah and his family and was willing to wait 150 years for Noah to learn how to build a boat to, to save even just a small remnant of humanity. That's, that's both sides of it. You're just going to get me on like all kinds of tangents. But yeah, I mean, you know, and so, so, so that is the implications of what we're talking about. Right? Because when we're talking about God, God's love, we can just be completely grateful all day long for God sending a son to the earth to live a perfect life, to go to the cross, to die to atone for our sins. Stop. Right? But out of that love, like we're just like, oh, well, that's great, and you know, and then that just kind of produces, like, what, what kind of fruit does that produce in our lives? Right? And now, all of this is of our own free will. And love is inspiring, love is motivating. But that also, let's just be honest. Oh, well, I get a pass for not doing anything, not heeding the voice of the Holy Spirit in my life and continuing this transformation. Whether it's day one or two, or the second decade of following Jesus. But then we bring God's wrath into this, the balance of it. And then there's some things that we need to reconcile. Because judgment begins with the people of God. And so that is the challenge before us. I mean, because we're not just like, if God has done a work in us, we want this number who is going to like experience destruction to be as small as possible. Right? Because we want to see as many people experiencing salvation as possible. God wants to see that. Right? But He's not forcing anything. But He is bringing judgment, and judgment that we would all deserve if it wasn't for Jesus Christ. He has made it as possi, as easily as possible to, to escape that judgment through Jesus Christ. And that's the message that we get to go out and share. But if we're only sharing one part of it, then the other part really is like, hey, wait a second. You need to hear both sides of it. Start, start Zephaniah, that's right. Believe it or not, I have seen a kid's book that has, yes, absolutely, it was like the, I did, well, I, I just, I did, I mean, like I, yeah, that's the thing about having older kids and younger kids is that as you're reading and then some of the older kids are asking questions, you're just like, all right, let's go there. Because they're, you know, they're picturing in their mind, they're like, wait a second, where did everybody else go? Oh, they drowned. And so, you know, the four-year-old, five-year-old is like, what? So anyways, but you know, that's, that's what you get for just reading straight through the Bible with your kids and next thing you know, you get a teacher from kids community come up and be like, hey, we were talking about David and Goliath. You know, little Lachlan is like, hey, you know, you forgot a part, and they were like, oh, what? Well, then he comes up and takes Goliath's sword and cuts off his head. No, he doesn't. Lachlan was like, yeah, he does. Those are favorite part, and so, anyways. So, all right, oh my goodness gracious, all right, so, so moving on from here, back on track, so the stage is set. Six of the seven seals have been opened. John's readers have learned of the four horsemen who, who leave a trail of death and destruction across the panorama of history. They have heard the agonizing plea of the martyrs for judgment on their oppressors and the vindication of their faithfulness that led to death. You may be sure that God will act. The universe itself will be subject to violent convulsions, and the unbelieving world will do their best to escape the wrath of the Lamb. So fierce will be that wrath that the question must be asked, who can stand? The answer is that they, the martyrs, and all they represent will come through victorious. The four horsemen portray the sad history of our planet, conquest, war, famine, and death. As followers of the slain Lamb, God's people suffer persecution and martyrdom. Their cry for vindication leads to the fundamental theological point of revelation, that God will vindicate Himself by vindicating His people. The fundamental theological point of revelation, that God will vindicate Himself by vindicating His people. "The faithful are to live with the assurance that God is in command of His universe. At the moment, it may appear that the forces of evil have gained the edge, but the one who defeated those very forces by means of His sacrificial death on the cross will return at the end of time to claim His own people and destroy forever all that stands in opposition." That was from Mounts. Amen? All right, who's ready for chapter seven? I got 10 minutes, we'll start it. Okay. Chapter seven. Now I know, I don't think we have any notes for seven yet. And that is absolutely my bad, but we'll at least begin this and then we'll, yeah, I'll have notes for you next week. "So after this, I saw four angels standing at the four corners of the earth, holding back the four winds of the earth, so that no wind would blow on the earth or on the sea or on any tree. And I saw another angel ascending from the rising of the sun, having the seal of the living God, and he cried out with a loud voice to the four angels to whom it was granted to harm the earth and the sea, saying, 'Do not harm the earth or the sea or the trees until we have sealed the bond servants of our God on their foreheads.' And I heard the number of those who were sealed, 144,000, sealed from every tribe of the sons of Israel. From the tribe of Judah, 12,000 were sealed. From the tribe of Reuben, 12,000. From the tribe of Gad, 12,000. From the tribe of Asher, 12,000. From the tribe of Naftali, 12,000. From the tribe of Manasseh, 12,000. From the tribe of Simeon, 12,000. From the tribe of Levi, 12,000. From the tribe of Issachar, 12,000. From the tribe of Zebulun, 12,000. From the tribe of Joseph, 12,000. From the tribe of Benjamin, 12,000 were sealed. After these things, I looked and behold, a..." After these things, I looked and behold, a great multitude which no one could count from every nation and all tribes and peoples and tongues, standing before the throne and before the Lamb, clothed in white robes and palm branches were in their hands. And they cry out with a loud voice, saying, salvation to our God who sits on the throne and to the Lamb. And all the angels were standing around the throne and around the elders and the four living creatures. And they fell on their faces before the throne and worshiped God, saying, amen, blessing and glory and wisdom and thanksgiving and honor and power and might be to our God forever and ever. Amen. Then one of the elders answered, saying to me, these who are clothed in the white robes, who are they and where have they come from? I said to him, my Lord, you know. And he said to me, these are the ones who come out of the great tribulation and they have washed their robes and made them white in the blood of the Lamb. For this reason, they are before the throne of God and they serve him day and night in his temple and he who sits on the throne will spread his tabernacle over them. They will hunger no longer, nor thirst anymore, nor will the sun beat down on them, nor any heat. For the Lamb in the center of the throne will be their shepherd and will guide them to springs of the water of life and God will wipe every tear from their eyes. So chapter seven comes as a parenthesis between the sixth and seventh seals, a stylistic feature repeated in the trumpet sequence in chapter 10, verse one. Through 11, verse 13. But not with the bowls. The bowls are found in chapter 16, verses 12 through 21. It also serves as a dramatic interlude that delays for a brief moment the disclosure of that which is to take place when the seventh and final seal is removed from the scroll of destiny. The chapter consists of two visions, one, the sealing of the 144,000 and the other, the blessedness of the great multitude before the heavenly throne. A great deal has been written about the identity of the 144,000 as well as the relationship between the two visions. The position taken here is that both visions, uh, that in both visions, the church is in view, but from two vantage points. Prior to the trumpet judgments, the last generation of believers is sealed so as to be saved from the destruction coming upon the earth and to be brought safely into the heavenly kingdom. The second vision is anticipatory of the eternal blessedness of all believers when in the presence of God, they realize the rewards of faithful endurance. The visions contrast the security and blessedness that await the faithful with the panic of a pagan world fleeing from judgment. In a sense, it answers the question just posed, who can stand? All right. So with that, I got five minutes left. I want to read note here from, uh, I read a little bit of this last time, Dr. Schnabel's, Forty Questions About the End Times. And this is, who are the 144,000 in Revelation seven? In discussion of matters related to the end times, the 144,000 of Revelation have often played an important role. There's been a long debate about who these people are and what their being sealed means. Since there's no consensus regarding the answer to these questions, the wise interpreter remains, refrains from being dogmatic. This does not mean however, that we cannot attempt to find the most plausible answers to these questions. So before we address these questions, the following points need to be emphasized. One, while John speaks of the 144,000 who have been sealed, it is helpful to notice that the number 12 is more important for John. He speaks of 12,000 people from each of the 12 tribes of Israel being sealed. So the number 12 is used 12 times. This will be important when we consider the possibility of the symbolic meaning of this number. Number two, the figure 144,000 also occurs in Revelation, chapter 14, verses one and three, a passage that must be part of the interpretation of Revelation seven. Just for reference, let's read Revelation 14, verses one and three. Then I looked and behold, the Lamb was standing on Mount Zion and with him 144,000, having his name and the name of his father written on their foreheads. And I heard a voice from heaven like the sound of many waters and like the sound of loud thunder and the voice which I heard was like the sound of harpist playing on their harps. And they sang a new song before the throne and before the four living creatures and the elders and no one could learn the song except the 144,000 who had been purchased from the earth. Number three, the seal of God is a central, central feature in Revelation seven, one through eight, mentioned twice as a noun and four times as a verb. Number four, the context of Revelation seven, one through eight, which is an interlude between the sixth and seventh sealed judgment must be regarded as significant for the interpretation of the passage. So the identity of the 144,000. The following two identifications are the main interpretations. We will briefly list the pros and cons of each position. The 144,000 are Christians from ethnic Israel. The interpretation that posits the, that the 144,000 are Christians from ethnic Israel is based on the statement that the 144,000 were sealed out of every tribe of the people of Israel, Revelation seven, four. And on the enumeration of 12 tribes of Israel, some argue that this is a special group of Jewish believers who have been set aside for the purpose of witnessing to a rebellious world. Nothing is said here about the rest of the saved. It is only noted that these will have special protection from the wrath of God while they witness. After their witness is concluded, martyrdom may well be their fate. It is argued that a non literal interpretation of the term Israel and of the list of 12 tribes makes no sense. Some also argue that since the author of the book is a Jewish Christian, it is not surprising that he envisioned a special role for Jewish Christians in the last period before the end. Some refer to Romans 11, seven, where Paul speaks of Jewish Christians as the elect and the remnant of Israel who accept Jesus as Israel's Messiah. Romans 11, verse five. Some argue that since the distinction between Jewish and Gentile Christians was an important category in the early church, it is not surprising that John speaks of Jewish Christians. A variant of this interpretation identifies the 144,000 with Jewish Christians who emerged as a remnant from among the Jewish people after the destruction of Jerusalem after AD 70. So when Jerusalem was destroyed by Rome, that there was 144,000 Jewish Christians that were there in and around Jerusalem at that time. So once again, that goes, if you remember back, the preterist view where everything has already been fulfilled historically, right? So that's kind of where that idea, that interpretation would fall into. So that's the thing. Anytime you're reading like an interpretation, you gotta be like, which theological camp does that fall in? Right? Just to understand like who's reaching and for what? All right. So let's go ahead and stop right there. So that's one possible interpretation of the 144,000. When we come back next week, uh, we will dig just a little bit more into that and then get into another, uh, view on who the 144,000 could be. Okay? All right. So there we go, wrath of God and, uh, getting into chapter seven with an interlude.